Uh, you don't have to stand, but could we just also uh take a moment of of silence to remember um Rashad Brooks uh and they had his funeral on yesterday. At some point, we hope that these tragedies will stop happening and that people will learn to respect people for what they are and that people will start abiding by the law and doing the right things and treat each other like we would like to be treated. So could we just have a a moment of silence for Mr. Brooks and his family and everyone else that we have lost in these tragedies? Thank you all so very much. Roll call, Kate.
Joseph Britton.
Present.
Rachel Chaleski.
Here.
Uh Kate Canetta, here. Gladys Cooper.
Here.
Lauren Daley. Lauren. I'm not sure if she's on here.
Uh, we silver next one.
All right, um Joe De Silva.
Present.
Catherine Hodgson.
Here.
Rich Jannelli.
Here.
Kathy Molinaro.
Here.
Al Russo.
Here.
Amy Spolino.
Here.
All present. Thank you. We all have all eleven boy members present, right Kate?
Uh, I did not get an okay from Lauren. Is she on here? And I missed her.
She is here, I think. Lauren? I heard her say yes when you called it. Okay. Okay, um next on the agenda, uh Dr. Sal, you gonna do the recognition part?
Yes, the awkward, the same thing. I don't know if any of them are attending by Zoom, uh but normally we have folks here.
We're here, Dr. Sal.
Okay, Chris, thank you.
Uh, you heard Anna Bosworth first, uh Dr. Sal.
Oh, okay.
Chris Roach is here, yeah.
All right, well then give me a second here. Let me, let me just do that, Chris, just a minute, Donna. Um, so anyway, the retirees, um much appreciated. You can see Mary Cronin, we did mention that last time, who started with us in nineteen sixty-seven as a grade one teacher at Morris Street. Uh, she went on to teach at Mill Ridge Intermediate and then she became principal in ninety-three. So she was leaving us. The rest of the folks, uh you could see with this forty-five, forty-two years, but we'll be, we'll be sending them an appreciation from the board and we'll also be uh, we'll be getting a gift to send to them. So I will thank you for all of your dedication and your time with the Danbury School and for being passionate, uh good guidance, folks for our, our students. Uh, we wish you a happy retirement and a healthy one.
Uh, and our retirees here on Zoom tonight, Dr. Sal?
I don't think so. Uh, if they are with someone, would you zero in for me? Anyone?
I'm here. Marie Dillon is here.
Charlie Barco is here.
Okay.
Thank you very much for being here.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate it. And so we have two. As you normally could see, we could have, we usually have about twenty-five. We only, I think this year Courtney's, I think it's seven, without counting Mary and some of that other things, but I think seven faculty. Um, so um not too many gifts to buy this year, but a lot of years and missing a lot of people. Um, seven's enough to lose, so be healthy.
And on behalf of the board, we certainly like to thank you for your service. We thank you for taking time to just zoom in on our meeting so we get to see those beautiful faces and then say thank you, thank you for the service that you have did for our district. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Do I look relaxed?
Kelly, you know.
You, you don't look old enough to retire, let me say that.
No, God bless you.
Yeah. Oh, God. Okay, um, and then we, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, you and that, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Christopher Roach, principal at AIS. Um, I wanted to do the dedication to Donna Bosworth, the Connecticut Art Education Association Elementary Art Educator of the Year. Um, Donna is driven, she's dedicated, knows how to build positive relationships with all students. She's got a tireless work ethic. Um, she's been at the forefront of our higher order thinking skills trainings and, um, you know, in accordance with the multiple intelligences. She runs in art links, she does student leadership, she's anywhere and everywhere. She's also the vice chair of uh, um, Celebration of Danbury Arts. She's a blessing to have on staff and she's always going above and beyond. So I'm thrilled to um congratulate Donna Bosworth on this uh wonderful honor.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I just wanted to recognize not just myself, but all the teachers that I've had the, the honor to work alongside with over my um twenty years, being able to work with them and collaborate with them. Um, and I want to sincerely thank the administrators that trust and treat the teachers as professionals, who um encourage and support the divergent and innovative thinking that and ideas that have really helped me do the best job that I can for my kids. Uh, it's the trust that we've gotten from them, um especially Chris and um, um, when I had Bill Santa Sierra and um our new um principal over at Morris Street, Kristen Bradley, they've been really supportive of me over the years. Um, and it's, that's what's been inspiring to me to be a lifelong learner and continue that um and led me to student-centered pedagogy such as uh teaching for artistic behavior and the higher order thinking training that we're trying to bring into the Magnet School and then um into the district. Um, well, for many of the students, the arts are a hook that bring them into the school. It's really important that we recognize the role of the arts is not just that extra or special during the day, but of an essential learning that they had, they need. Uh, it's one of the most basic and important foundations of communication within and between societies. Uh, we turn to the arts in times of joy, but we've seen it recently all over the news. It's also in times of crisis. People with music and murals and be trying to find a way to express all of these big feelings and the trauma that our society is going through. Um, going forward, I know that the arts are going to be even more critical to our students as we help them make connections, both with the academic content and what they're feeling, but also to support their social emotional health and growth. So I just want to thank the board again for your support.
Anna, thank, this is Dr. Sal. Thank you. Uh, I will say this, our board, um, the arts have really influenced all the boards ever since I've been there. That is integral part of what we do. We don't consider it an extra. It's integrated. And I think the board has been really mindful to, to uh respect the work and, and the role it plays in the educating the whole child for us. Um, it's just been a, a great to work with the board that really appreciates and allows all of you to do the work that you do. Um, I know you serve as a planning person for all of our teachers at the elementary and you guys really take on so much extra work. People don't even know it, but uh it's greatly appreciated. Chris has just been just ecstatic with your work and um it's great to have you represent the arts for Danbury. So with a heartfelt congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Sal.
Thank you. I don't know if a board member has a comment, but thank you.
Again, we just would like to say thank you. Thank you for loving all the children that you have been in contact with. And thank you again for your service. Okay. Well, we're gonna move on down the agenda. Um, Kate, the public participation?
Certainly. Due to the unique nature of the COVID-nineteen crisis and the limitations of technology, members of the public who are Danbury residents are invited to send brief comments and questions via email in advance to DPS underscore public comment underscore B O E at danbury.k twelve dot C T dot U S.
Okay. Uh, Sandy, you wanna read the comments, please?
Sure, we have three comments. Uh, first one is from Cheryl Radachowski. She said, while I accept the decision made by the district to implement a policy where the students are held harmless for their remote learning, such as students electing to opt-in to receive the numerical grades earned for their coursework or simply accept pass fail, I do not agree with the decision to eliminate the ranking and the honor roll for quarter four. For those students such as my own children who worked hard and made the decision to go with grades instead of pass fail, they did so with the expectation that those numeric grades would have meaning. And for that, there could be an honor roll where they receive recognition for their efforts. I am requesting that this decision be revisited and the honor roll for quarter four be reinstated. Next participant was Julie San Severino. Thank you for taking the time to read comments submitted by the public while we forego in-person meetings. I am writing to express my opinion about the lack of honor roll standing at DHS. Yes, we were informed that there would be no honor roll for quarter four, but these students who would qualify for honor roll based on numeric grades chose to continue to do their best work and keep up the high standards they set for themselves. They should be acknowledged for that work. They decided to not settle for the pass fail and to accept the challenges that distance learning presented and still they persevered. Please consider awarding honor roll and high honor roll status to the kids who have earned it. Uh, next one is Tracy Rita. I would like to know why the class rank for high school was not updated at the end of the year. Having a rising senior who was sending transcripts in the fall to colleges, he will need to have an accurate class ranking. Seeing that his GPA changed from S-one to S-two, you would also expect his class rank to change, which incident because he is the same number as he was for S-one. Incoming seniors need this to be accurate. In my opinion, if you are calculating GPA, you need to calculate class rank. Why was this not done? And I'm just refreshing, that is our last uh public comment.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Now we're moving to consent calendar. Uh, Amy, would you like to do the consent calendar, please?
Consent calendar. Uh, that the Board of Education approves the items, item, I'm sorry, items on the consent calendar, exhibit twenty to sixty-eight through exhibit twenty to seventy-two as recommended.
Motion made by Amy. Who's uh second?
Second. Joe De Silva.
Okay, any question concerning consent calendar?
Yes, I just have one thing. For the um, the um minutes for the June ninth meeting, the regular meeting, I am action item B, there were some um question marks. I think they were placeholders for whoever was supposed to make the motion. Um, could it just read and um instead of the question marks that it was listed on the original agenda that the board, et cetera, et cetera, and that Dr. Sal requested um that this action item be removed?
Uh, could we just have that uh, just a correction in a minute and they'll be brought to us for final adoption at the next meeting?
Yes, I will edit that.
Anything else? Anna, again, uh, who's second in motion?
I did.
No? Okay. All in favor of the motion, could I hear, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Saying none, we move on. We will have those corrections in the next minute, okay? Uh, Dr. Sal, could you briefly talk about the uh, the donation uh from AIS?
Yes, Chris, are you on?
Yes.
Is board, part of board policy?
That's okay, that's okay. Part of board policy is that uh over a thousand, we accept the gift and we're really honored with, uh, Chris has something special to say. Go ahead, Chris. Yeah, so a gaga pit is something that has really become a staple at AIS. It's like this generation's version of dodgeball. And over the um course of the last year, we had a, the wood started to rot on the, the gaga pit. So I would like, and I got the official quote today, it'll be three thousand one hundred. Um, and it, it will make, um, it's a um, a really top-notch, high-quality gaga pit that I will do a dedication on uh to the class of, the AIS class of twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty. And they missed out on nature's classroom, they missed out on much of the fifth grade experience. And it's something that I would like to do because of the amazing community that I serve, the amazing parents and students and educators that I serve. Uh, sort of my way of giving back to people who have done so much for me. And I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
No, we thank you, Chris. Uh, and you know, I know I came up in a different time than you, but I'm going, they didn't have any of this coming when I was going to school. So I wanted to know what it was. But thank you so very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, do we have an employee rep? Any of our student representatives here?
Uh, boy, one, I think we need a motion to accept the gift, that's all.
Okay, but it was included, it was included in the action item.
Oh, then we're good. Chris, you're all set.
Amy, am I correct? Amy, you included that in the action item, exhibit seventy-two.
Okay.
Right, okay.
And, and let me just take a second and thank Chris for that. That's a very thoughtful gift you've given, um personally giving to the district. So thank you uh very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Cooper, you have an employee representative tonight.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, how are you, Ann?
How are you? Nice to see you. Nice to see everyone. Good evening, everyone. Um, being our final meeting um of a very, very long, long year, um I did want to start off by congratulating my friend Donna Bosworth. Um, I know it's already been, hi Donna, it's already been stated how amazing she is, but from our perspective, um Donna is a tireless worker for NEA Danbury. She works to serve teachers. In addition to all the work that she does for students, she works to help teachers in incredible amount. And she recently became one of our executive board members. So we're thrilled to see her get these wonderful accolades. And um I just want to echo also um her sentiments about how important the arts are, especially in this time, um to make sure that we are really focusing in on the social emotional learning piece for our students. The arts really makes sure that we're hitting all of those points. So I want to thank Donna for all of her wonderful achievements and thank you for all of your hard work. And also send thank you to our retirees. I know that um NEA Danbury usually puts on a huge um party for them at the Amber Room to celebrate um their years of service. And that was taken away from the retirees. And a lot of the fanfare and the closure that the retirees usually have to say goodbye to their students and, and um, you know, say goodbye to a very long career of service um was robbed from them. And that's, that's a sad and emotional piece. And I just wanted to make sure that um we echoed again, our congratulations to the retirees and their dedication for their service to our community and to our school district and of course our students. So thank you. And a special shout out to my dear, dear friend who is retiring, Nancy Michael, who was one of our teachers of the year in Danbury a few years back. And um when Nancy Michael leaves us, we are losing an amazing science teacher who has led this district in science innovation and has led invention conventions for our district for many, many years and taken many students to the state level in competitions. And even last year, took one of her students that made it to um the national level, took that student to Michigan for the national competition because she felt so strongly this student needed to attend. And there were some financial issues and Nancy Michael made it happen. So thank you. That's the kind of people that serve Danbury. So shout out to all of the retirees and thank you so much for your service. I want to also thank um Dr. Sal. Uh, I know he probably, his ears prickle whenever I say thank you, Dr. Sal, but thank you, Dr. Sal. And thank you, Dr.
They're itching right now.
I know. Thank you, Dr. Casamiro, for the, of the listening sessions. Um, I think those have been a very positive. I know we have another one coming up on Friday, um but that's been a positive thing. And I've been hearing great feedback about that. The teachers who participated um felt that they were heard. And I know a lot of parents that joined in, you know, just to get their voices heard. There's a lot of frustration and anxiety, obviously, that we're all experiencing during this time. And that was a very positive and constructive move. So thank you for that. I did want to speak to, I know it's on the agenda tonight to approve the, the changes in the calendar. And uh I noticed that Amy Spolino, in the minute of last meeting, um asked the question, you know, how do the teachers feel about five days front-loading um before the kids actually arrive? And I do want to say that, you know, we have talked and um we firmly believe at NEA Danbury that um those two extra days are going to be desperately needed to get us all up to speed. Um, we just want to go on record in front of the board saying that those two days that we're front-loading, in the um November election day to uh August twentieth. Are you there?
Yeah, it is something, either it's disconnected or someone, too many, we need to mute. Go ahead.
Okay, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That's better, okay. Um, so the, the two front-loading of the PB days, the May and then the November, um, we definitely support that, but we just want to go on record as saying that we really, the emphasis needs to be on um re-entry work and COVID work to get teachers up to speed and, and not working on any new programming or things like that. It really needs to focus on the COVID work that we need to do to get students back in, whatever that will look like. We know that there's going to be an announcement from the governor tomorrow, which hopefully will give us some more guidelines of how we will plan. Um, and we also know that our team was kind of put on hold, waiting for that additional government um notification of what the uh re-entry may look like and the guidelines. So I want to emphasize once more, I know I said this um a few weeks back, that it's very important, it's actually essential that we have a strong teacher and a strong employee representation on that re-entry committee to make sure that we're troubleshooting, that we're thinking through all of the aspects um that may not be, you know, not for any fault of the board, but you know, the people that are in the trenches actually working and thinking about how the operation will go down for serving our students. Um, we really need to be a part of that team. Um, I have probably upwards of at least fifty teachers that have expressed um desire to be a part of that conversation. And you know, I hope that the board um takes a lot of those, those employees up on that offer to use their ideas and their innovation for creative out-of-the-box thinking, because I really believe that that's what we're going to be needing to do, is troubleshoot and problem solve to make sure everybody gets back to work safely and our students can enter buildings safely. Um, so that re-entry team has, it, re-entry team is very important to make sure that we have the employee voice on that team. Um, other than that, you have an item on your agenda for tonight um to um provide some flexibility with teacher evaluation dates. I just wanted to also mention that that is something that we are working through with Dr. Sal. Um, we do have some, some issues carryover from last year's TVAL wrapping up evaluations. Um, and we're going to be working through some of those things in the um weeks to come. So you may be hearing more from us on that um if we can't come to a resolution, but I think we'll, we should be okay. Um, but just to give you a heads up that we are working on a resolution, TVAL issue um ending this nineteen-twenty school year. Other than that, hoping that everyone gets to have some rest before the chaos ensues um and we work on the re-entry problems and process. And um to also thank the board for their, their hard work this year and um thank you for all you do. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ann. Uh, any students uh present, Dr. Sal? Any of our students here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was, no, I don't believe so. Uh, I'll ask the question. Any students show up yet? Representatives? No, they typically don't. Okay.
Okay, okay. Next on the agenda, uh, is there a brief presentation?
Let's see here. Um, this, uh, no, we do not.
Okay, so we don't have presentation, okay? Okay, now we're gonna move on to um action, the action item, action item A, Kate?
Uh, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the May twenty twenty operating results and analysis for the general funds, grants and projects in accordance with exhibits twenty dash seventy-three.
Motion made by Kate. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any question, any discussion?
Just.
Courtney, do you have anything? Okay, Rachel?
Just one quick thing. There was something that was, um, we received today, I believe, that was inadvertently left out of the um, can that, when we redo the minutes for next time, can that be included? That's, that was it for me.
Okay. And I also want to uh ask Courtney, uh, does she have anything that she wanted to add to this uh action item?
Oh, no, Gladys, I would just point out, yeah, it's very similar. The only change that you'll see reflected is that um five hundred fifty thousand dollars of Matrix funding that we talked about in earlier meetings being removed from the budget for this year.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Gladys.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, could I hear, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any of opposed, any abstention? Motion so carried. Action item B, uh, Joe De Silva?
Yes. Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the revised calendar for twenty twenty twenty-one in accordance with twenty dash seventy-four.
Motion made, motion made by Joe, could I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconding by Joe Britton. Any questions or discussion? We've heard the comments already concerning the calendar? Okay. Saying none, all in favor, could I hear, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion so carried. Um, action item C, Kathy?
I make a motion that the board, am I, am I muted?
No.
The Board of Education approved the teacher evaluation plan in accordance with twenty dash seven-five.
Motion made by Kathy, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconding by Amy. Any questions in the discussion? Dr. Sal, you having comments?
Uh, no, we, I think we're working through it. The, the state, um, just like the GPA and the honor roll and everything you heard before, um, waived a lot of things that um uh we weren't expected to finish, but we have some agreements to work through and some understandings, but um it should be fine.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, could I hear, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposeds, any abstentions? Motion so carried. Action item D, Joe Britton?
I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the superintendent's contract and salary for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as recommended.
Motion made by Joe, could I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joe De Silva? Any discussion? Any questions? Saying none. Um, Kate, can we have a roll call?
Uh, Joe Britton?
Yep.
Rachel Chaleski? Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley?
No.
Joe, Joe De Silva?
Yes.
Catherine Hodgson?
No.
Rich Jannelli?
Yes.
Kathy Molinaro?
Yes.
Al Russo?
No.
Amy Spolino?
Yes.
Give me the total, Kate.
Uh, so that's seven to four there.
Okay. The motion has seven to four. Um, so we move on to the next item. Motion was so carried. Uh, action item E, Kathy Molinaro?
Make a motion that the Board of Education accept the cabinet members' contracts for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one as recommended.
Could I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Kate. Any discussion? Any comments? Seeing none. All in favor of the motions. Kate, roll call, please.
Joe Britton?
Yes.
Rachel Chaleski?
Yes.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley? Lauren Daley?
Just muted.
Thank you. Joe DeSilva?
Yes.
Catherine Hodgson?
Yes.
Rich Janelli?
Yes.
Kathy Molinaro?
Yes.
Al Russo?
Yes.
Amy Spolino?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Okay. Motion so carried, so carried. Action item F?
I will make a motion that the Board of Education accept the exempt employee salaries, including the cabinet members, for 2020-2021 as recommended.
Motion made by Kate. Could I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Amy. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Kate, do the roll call, please.
Joe Britton?
Yes.
Rachel Chaleski?
Yes.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley?
Yes.
Joe DeSilva?
All abstain.
Catherine Hodgson?
Yes.
Rich Janelli?
Yes.
Kathy Molinaro?
Yes.
Al Russo?
Yes.
Amy Spolino?
Yes.
That's 10 yes, one abstention.
Yeah, 10 yes. The motion, the motion so passed. Richard, action item G, Rich Janelli?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve and set the budget for 2020-2021 in the amount of $135,686,000, an increase of .9% in accordance with the schedules.
Motion made by Mr. Janelli. Could I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any questions, any discussion?
Just a couple of quick things. I just want to thank Courtney for all of her help working through the budget. I asked for a workshop and she did a great job presenting it to the full board. I really appreciate that. And there were other separate emails between she and I and phone calls. So thank you, Courtney. The other thing I just want to mention is that, you know, this is, this doesn't include all of the braided funding that we've been talking about, the 10 million that gets us really close, as close as I've ever seen, to our original ask. We're just shy of our 146 with that 10 million that we're not voting on this evening. And also, just one final question, and then I promise, you know, I'll leave you alone.
No, leave one. Don't leave us behind.
Student support specialists. I understand that they're touching all K through 5 and they're working with the coaches so that all students, K through 5 across the board, are supported. Are there support, student support specials for each elementary school?
Let me start this. Our intentionality is that there would be. We were looking at a phase and I am somewhat reading some tea leaves that I'm a little worried about what might be happening in September. We may have to reallocate some funds so that we can do that earlier. Because the whole intent of the money, Rachel, was to mitigate the loss. And if the kids come back, you know, and they're not just learning, you're not going to mitigate in January. So yes, that's our intent and we were going to delay some of it, but I think we're going to have to work with Courtney. We're close to reallocating, not buying some things so that if we do come back September, that those kids have support. So the answer to that should be yes. That's our intent.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Rachel. And thank you for your comments, Dr. Sal. Mr. DeSilva?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo what Rachel just said. Courtney did an amazing job. I can't believe this is her first year here. She, the cabinet, Dr. Sal, you guys did an amazing job trying to piece this together. As Rachel pointed out, this doesn't include about $900 million in braided funding that we're being allowed to utilize basically one-time funding sources that are, you know, rolling over grant money, rolling over of surplus that we were able to save this year, CARES money. It gets us to our 146 ask, but to be clear, this isn't our ask. This is not the same 146. Some of it is, not all of it. There are things that were part of our 146 ask back in the spring that, or back in the winter, that we're not doing now, that we've had to give up and replace with COVID-related stuff. Now, obviously, that's just the world we live in right now. But to be clear, $1.2 million increase, less than a 1% increase from the City of Danbury, is very low. It's not, it does not keep up with our contracted increases. It doesn't keep up with our collectively bargained salary increases. I understand it's a pandemic. I understand the challenges facing the city and I'm supporting this budget and I'm supporting the work that Dr. Sal and the cabinet and Courtney did to make all of this work. But to be clear, this is not enough support from the City of Danbury. This is, again, we are going to wind up being last in funding. Less than a 1% increase with the challenges we were already facing, combined with the challenges we're facing now, really leaves us short. And we're getting, we're getting a long way to where we need to be, but only through a lot of hard work by our administration and our staff. And I'm very worried about next year. So thank you to the staff and City of Danbury, please. If you can find something else, couch cushions under the bed, I don't care where you find it, please do us a favor and find a little bit more. We can absolutely use it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. DeSilva. Right, Kate, would you do the roll call?
Sure. Joe Britton?
Yes.
Rachel Chaleski?
Yes.
Kate Canetta, yes. Gladys Cooper?
Yes.
Lauren Daley?
Yes.
Joe DeSilva?
Yes.
Catherine Hodgson?
Yes.
Yes.
Rich Janelli?
Yes.
Kathy Molinaro?
Yes.
Al Russo?
Yes.
Amy Spolino?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much and thank you Courtney and cabinet.
Motion so carried. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Virtual learning forum. Thank you, Erin. She mentioned the forum we had Monday night. We had more than 100 participants. We had a subscription that didn't, didn't get operationalized, apparently, but it will be, we decided to have another one this coming Friday. Breakfast forum with me. I guess it could take up to 1,000. And I'd rather think if the governor publicizes what he's thinking, I probably will have about 1,000 people calling me on Friday. But we do appreciate the input. I think those of you from the board that listen, thank you. We did take notes. And me, and thank you and me for sending it out too. This is our forte. I mean, folks really were considered, they knew that we were under strain and if we go distance learning, they'd like to see it enhanced. This is earnings point two. Some were concerned about cleanliness in returning, things of that nature that we need to be mindful of. Also, helping, although they appreciate the communications weekly and the robo-calls, that some work with parents in terms of supporting distance learning, if that's the route we go, would be greatly appreciated as well. I think Friday, there'll be a little more meat and potatoes because I think they'll hear from the governor, those things that he's asking the towns to do. So the comments will be probably much more clear and useful. I did get some comments from the teachers, which I appreciate it, particularly in the arts. You know, how do you have an art class and how do you do this with materials? And they actually sent me some recommendations I sent over to Kevin that we could put in our, in our idea boxes. So I thought the night was appreciated by me and I think those parents that participated were on point and they were helpful to us. At least that's why I thought so. I thank them for that. Let me segue into reopening 2020. The constant is the unknown. I think the latest, and I heard that just this evening, Connecticut, in fact, New Haven and Hartford, few of the cities that actually have very low numbers of coronavirus cases. And I think they're waiting for something like this to put together their recommendation. So I think the ink is still wet on the pages that we're going to be hearing about tomorrow. And we will hear about it tomorrow. We do have a regional group that we have taken the leadership to ask for because it will impact our region. We have so many parents that work close by and our teachers and faculty that work in neighboring districts. It would be nice to have some cohesion in the dish, in the area if it comes down to that. So we have asked that this group convene as soon as the governor puts out his edict to us. And then we have a committee that's working and from that committee, I'm sure we'll have to expand. We have a high, we have a secondary, we have an elementary. We'll get some feedbacks from other, other folks, as Erin just mentioned, both at the elementary and high school. And that group will have to come together and along with the city health director to talk to us about the lens of safety, which is, I promised the parents, we might not have the best plan, you know, everybody's not going to agree with it, but by God, we'll try to get the safest plan that we can for our kids. So that, I guess, will be happening on Thursday. We'll have a superintendent's, we'll have a peek at it tomorrow, apparently, and then it'll be public to the, to the public on Thursday. Kevin, you want to add to that, please? Kevin is the liaison. By law, we have to have one person who's the czar of reopening. I introduce Czar Kevin, if he wants to chime in.
So, yes, thank you, Sal, for appointing me. So I just wanted to, I'll just add to what Dr. Sal just mentioned. We reached out to Ed Advance as soon as we were made aware that the commissioner and the governor will be updating us with something more formal. We now anticipate that there's going to be considerable flexibility for districts. And so given that anticipation, we requested Ed Advance, and they did an amazing job facilitating the initial workshops on this. And then they, they stopped the meetings waiting for something formal to come out from the governor's office. So you might recall, it was almost a month ago, there was a Friday, we were expecting something official coming out from the office. We're still waiting for that, for that information and now it appears it's going to be coming. Something was going to be shared with us momentarily. And so the thought is, the, the school district that are part of the Ed Advance region, they will be reconvened so we can revisit. Ed Advance has developed a template for all of the districts to use. And so, you know, some of the mitigation strategies that the various subcommittees and I have developed, we'll be literally cutting and pacing and putting those strategies in that template. But the, but, but, but the big, the big work is determining how we're going to reopen schools. And then all of the other strategies will follow. And so we have our work cut out for us, certainly moving forward. But as Sal mentioned earlier, we want to be, we don't necessarily have to be lockstep with our neighboring districts, but I do think we want to all be on the same page, given that we have our, you know, a lot of our staff in neighboring towns. And then those staff, of course, will need to be available if they're going to come to work here in Danbury. So we're hoping we can help each other out in this work. Ahead.
I'll entertain any questions before I move on. Summer school update, Kara and Kelly, or Kevin? Let's start with you, Kevin.
Okay. Yeah, I can start. So just, just an update for the board. You know, with everything going on, of course, schools continues to move forward. And so we have two, we've appointed two people in charge of K5 summer school. They've done an amazing job. And as you might imagine, academic focus has had to change considerably, given that we're going online. So Kara, on top of, you know, literally changing everything that we've had to do, K12, had to do it again for summer school. And so we have a delivery in place in summer school. Regular summer school, K5, will start July 6th and that will, that will go throughout the summer until July 30th for, for grades 6, 8, and 9, 12. Will also be from July 6th to July 30th. The times will be Monday through Thursday from eight, from, from 8:00 to 11:00 for the AM session for the high school and 11:30 to 2:30 for the PM session for the high school. We, we also, we are running one accelerated course for the high school this summer and that will actually start on as soon as next Monday, the 29th, and will continue through July 30th. And I know, you know, Kelly also has some summer programming and so she may want to also give an update.
Thank you, Kevin. We have approximately 250 students that are going to participate. They're students with special needs that will be participating in a virtual special education extended school year program. What we have done is we've hired numerous special education teachers, support staff, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists, and counseling staff. And we have devised kids into small groups and they will be scheduled for at least an hour of virtual instruction a day with their special education teacher, plus individual or small group sessions with all the related services staff. And then in addition to that, we will be also providing some online-supported activities for reinforcement through the utilization of the Google Classroom, which was a model that we used during the school year. And so they will have a, you know, very small group specialized to target on their needs. And the, really, the sole purpose of the special education summer school program is to keep consistency with the scheduling and to avoid regression of skills for any of those students. So I have to give a big thank you to my team. The five special education supervisors have been working tirelessly along with myself to come up with 250 individualized, unique schedules for every single kid that's participating. So it's been a little different, but we will, we're certainly excited about it. I think it'll go very well. And what we tried to do is build off of a lot of the things that we put in place this year. And we heard the feedback from students and parents and teachers as well that virtual instruction, the live instruction was really helpful. And so we are putting a stronger emphasis and focus on that with supplementary support and activities. And we are copying, very similar to the secondary model, where there'll be an AM and PM session. So the total time that we'll run it will be between 8 o'clock in the morning and 1 o'clock in the afternoon. But students will be scheduled, you know, early morning or later morning based on the group that they're assigned to. Those individual schedules will be mailed out to parents on Monday of next week and teachers will get their class lists and assignments by Friday of this week. So I'm excited. I think it'll go very well, but it certainly has been a unique undertaking this summer.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody's had any questions.
Does anyone have any question for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. I think the next thing I have is, see, I just wanted the board to be aware that we, they call it the Connecticut Association for Athletics. See, I see, they have what they call re-socialization of high school athletics, which means they'll have conditioning. And that is to begin July 6th. They'll be up at the high school with that requirement. Then the high school, along with Chip Silverstein, R.A.D., and others, have been meeting with the nurses and also worked with consultation with the city. They set up rules and regulations on safety. And so those will be published and given to parents. But I just wanted you to be aware that on the July 6th, we're going, they're going to start seeing athletes, which is probably telling all of us they fully expect to have some kind of a season next year, whether they're spectators or not, that's another thing. But, so that's going to begin July 6th at Danbury High School. There's a morning session and then there's a break for cleaning, what have you. And then the high school will then be reoccupied with another group. So that's starting July 6th.
Now, will that be all or just football? Are we talking just football?
No, no, no. I believe it's all. There's track people, rest, all of them. Any of the kids that want to come, actually? Yeah, that's Yeah, that's my understanding.
It's voluntary participation for any of the sports. So both the coaches as well as the students want to volunteer to participate. So it's open to all, and it will probably assume most of the athletics.
And it's only about 10 at a time, I don't know.
Right.
How will that be conveyed to the athletes to sign up?
They, Kath, they have a protocol that they'll be, let me just, actually, I just took it off my agenda. I'm sorry, let me go back to it, because I did ask them for. What they're doing, Kathy, is their, let's see. Like, for example, Tuesday, 23rd, there'll be athletic staff meeting to review the information with all Danbury High School coaches. The athletes and the trainers will be there along with them. On the 24th, the information would be shared through the Danbury High School website so that all athletes and parents would know. But last week, next week, put out roble calls to Danbury High School community with information those students interested in participating. And week of the 30th, use of social media at all that week for Danbury High School parents. And that's in preparation for the first summer session. So they have an outreach plan, starting with the orientation of the coaches.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I, let me see, I think that's all I have on my list. And we have discussion on the next item.
Dr. Sal, did you want a quick hiring update where we are since we're in the last meeting?
Yes, please.
So, welcome to the last meeting, which midway into the first meeting of next year with hiring. We're now kind of just starting to ramp up hiring season. As many of you might remember, as part of our discussions about enrollment, we've done some moving of elementary teachers in particular to try to measure the ebb and flow of enrollment around the district. So that process of relocating and transferring elementary teachers is more or less complete at this point. I think everybody's pretty happy with where they're going. And so we're in the process of getting those folks settled. And that was something that I did in collaboration with NEA Danbury. And we've had some volunteers, and so that has all run pretty smoothly. As a result, there's not going to be a whole lot of elementary hiring. It's something very unusual that I haven't really seen before. There's a very few elementary positions. We're in the process right now of trying to fill some of the harder to fill secondary positions at high school and middle school level and in special education. And as I've mentioned in earlier meetings, we are onboarding virtually. So my team is doing everything either via email or direct links online. And we're actually trying to get ID cards done remotely as well now. So we're making the most of our newfound situation and trying to get everybody in as quickly as we can. So it'll be, and I know I say this every, it looks like it'll be a lighter hiring year for us than in years going forward or in past. And we're happy that we haven't had to lose anybody, we haven't had to do any layoffs or furloughs. So that's been a really good part of the process. Summer school employees are all in, it's over 100. And those folks have all been transitioned into their new positions. And so they're all ready to go for the start of summer school as well. So we're in kind of full hiring swing now. That's where my group is.
Before I leave my report, does Kara or Kelly have anything to add? So, you know, it was the last meeting, Kara, anything to add?
I did, just a little bit, go back to the summer school conversation. I just wanted to let the board know, you know, you may get some parents this summer asking about, you know, what they can do with their child and what kind of programming. And, you know, there are definitely limited options this summer out there because of what's going on. But please refer them to the K-12 interactive site. It is updated with grade level suggestions for the practice. We're highly suggesting that kids continue to use, you know, what's there. Parents can be assured that what's there is vetted. Certainly, they're bombarded with lots of programs right now that they see on the internet, but they're not sure which ones are appropriate, which ones are high quality, which ones are standards aligned. And so, you know, our team has done that work. Additionally, there are the programs that students normally use during the year. We usually close those licenses down and redo a lot of rerastering in the summer. But we're leaving those licenses open longer through August 7th, so kids can continue to practice. And we won't roster next year's students with all of those licenses, like iXL, RAS Kids, Imagine Learning, things like that, that they're already using. We won't do that, we won't roll that up and reset that until August. So this way, kids will have a seamless transition, they're able to keep their laptops this summer. So just, you know, if you get, you know, parents or community members who do ask about that, you can, you know, definitely refer them back to that website as a safe place to get some good suggestions for grade level practice that's appropriate.
Okay, Kelly, you good?
Nothing additional for me, just the update on summer.
Okay, just to the board, it looks as though our enrollment has kind of slowed down. Remember last week, the week, whenever it was, they accelerated. So we were kind of like, I know we didn't in August yet, right? But right now, it hasn't accelerated so much. It's kind of slowed down. If you permit me to make a comment here, because of the opening remarks from the parents, we won't have time to talk. I think part of the board's responsibility and mine is to give notice when things are going to happen in the district. That is regarding student comportment, our other rules and regs. And I believe, you know, in the cases of the grading at the high school, which we knew would be very, very difficult for a number of reasons, we did put folks on notice. However, it was done, it was a very difficult decision to do. If you could recall, the state was very explicit about equity and access. That grading should not have occurred, that it should have been a pass fail. But we went the extra step. And I'm going to let Kara spend a few minutes explaining that and why. And we knew there would be some positives and negatives about it. And I do understand that. So Kara, do you want to make a few comments to sort of board as some background?
Sure, sure. And so, you know, just to remind the group that we did offer students the choice of either choosing their numerical GPA or selecting to opt into the pass fail system. And so, you know, the one thing that was clear is that you had to choose a system. And then it was up to the student to do that. And of course, they, you know, would receive guidance from their parents or teachers to help them make those decisions. And students were given a form to fill out with deadlines and dates. We did state that the DLPs and the DLFs would not impact GPA. So those, you know, and we held true to that. And so if students opted into that this particular quarter and potentially the semester, depending on the way that it worked, they would, you know, that would not impact the GPA. It would basically freeze where they left off after first semester. And that what would only be determined was whether or not the students received credit for that course. So if the student failed, they would not receive credit for the course, they would have to retake. So they had to do enough to pass the course and to satisfy the course requirements to get the pass. If students wanted the numeric, they had to select the numeric system. And just to kind of correct the, I know there was a couple of questions about class rank. We are going to run class rank. And so that will, you know, that will affect everyone. Class rank is important for a variety of reasons, which is one of the reasons why we also wanted to make sure that students had an option for numeric grade. Because there's a whole lot of reasons beyond what's happening now for that in terms of college, in terms of scholarship opportunities, in terms of different requirements from programs that are very highly competitive, that may want to see that. So that was why we went the extra mile to offer both systems. It was very complicated. It was, there was a, you can imagine with the number of students and the number of teachers and the number of courses, you know, going through all of those to kind of make sure that the data was clean, that there weren't any mistakes. You know, everything is hand-clicked by each teacher, each grade, each number, each comment. And so there's a lot of work on the backend. We were not able to run class rank until all of that proofing was done. However, it was important to get the transcripts out to the colleges by their deadline. So the transcripts did go out, they just went out, but class rank is being run in the next day or two. And that will be updated in Power School. And if anyone wants to get an updated transcript, all they have to do is simply request it, and we can have them come and pick it up in the office. So we, you know, we have managed to figure it all out. It just took a little bit longer than it normally does under the circumstances. And the team at the high school worked incredibly hard to get that done. And the data department worked incredibly hard to verify everything on the backend and to make sure that that was cleaned up. We are not running in honor roll. We did not think that that was an appropriate thing to do. Not all kids had the same opportunity in that regard. But class rank, students did have equal opportunity to make those decisions to preserve their GPA prior to this. And so we felt that that was equal. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. You know, we felt that we've offered a variety of options that was in the best interest of the students, and that was fair for everybody and honored everybody's situation to the best of our ability.
Kara, I have a question about rank.
Sure.
What, and I'm thinking, not thinking so much for seniors, I'm thinking more for like freshmen or sophomores or juniors. They take a semester's worth of pass fail grades now. That effectively adds that many more credits to where they are. It makes it that much harder for them to move their class rank going forward.
Well, so what it does.
You know, you're batting, you're batting a harder to move your batting average in August than it is in April.
Sure, but what it also did is it preserved where they were before, prior to the disruption. So if you had a particular, if you had a B, you know, average of, you know, going in, you basically, if you entered into the pass fail system, you kind of froze that. If you, in the numeric system, if you were, you know, you wanted to choose into the numerics, then that numerical grade would feed into the first semester grade, and your GPA would be averaged out cumulatively, and that would be weighted and fed into class rank. So you had an opportunity to really, to improve your status if you chose to the numeric and your grades were higher than they were the first semester. So basically, you either preserved where you left off or you were able to, you know, enter your numerics in to feed into that GPA, which feeds into class rank. So it was an opportunity for kids, you know, kids made the choice based on what was best for them and their situation.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I was going to move on, but thank you. I know we generally don't comment, but I thought it was fair that the parents at least heard and border the rationale. It was, like everything else, I think, you know, it was difficult. The end was very difficult with the grading, I will tell you that. But the verification process was over the top. But that had to happen to be fair to everyone that it was accurate. So I need to publicly thank all of those folks that did that. With Dan Donovan and his team and the registrars and everyone else, though, and counselors, so thank you. I will move on if it's okay, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, so summit. I think I said something to the board, but last week, I think it was Monday, I got a caller right after a board meeting that they would like a representative to walk, would have walked through up at the summit, i.e. the Matrix. And the state was looking at the ideas of getting a building to accommodate the enrollment that we have asked the city to be mindful of based on the demographers work and that we needed some space. Instead of just building a place, well, the idea of purchasing a place was something that the state wanted to come down and actually take a look. So we met with them on Monday. And I'm going to let Kara take it from here because she was there. And then I do have some comments at the end about some things I think the board should think about. Joe, I did write Joe this morning and this afternoon as well, facilities committee, because I think we're going to have to have a committee meeting and discussion with that. But you should hear a little bit from Kara. Kara was also invited to visit with, I guess, the department after the Monday meeting in Hartford, just to talk with them. The meeting on Monday, we had most, if not all of our delegation, state delegation was in attendance. They took a tour as well. And then the next day, there was a private conversation with the department, who would be looking at reviewing the plan if they're going to approve the funding. And Mr. Arcanti already has been, who's been just terrific about working out the details up in Hartford, along with the rest of the convention up there, if they're going to make some changes. So Kara, would you want to just briefly talk about it?
Sure. So we did have an opportunity to go back up to the summit. I keep wanting to call it the Matrix, but it's been renamed. So if I say Matrix, just, you know, I mean the summit. So, and, you know, just to look at the space, we, you know, like many of you, we did get a chance to see some of the plans behind there. It seems to be very exciting. I think, you know, the first hurdle is to make sure that the project itself can go through. When I went up to Hartford, I think perhaps my visit with them may have been a little premature in talking about the different pathways and all the things we're excited about and the programming piece, which I think, you know, we really have to spend more time thinking through and vetting and working with the high school and district administration to make sure that we are actually fulfilling, you know, putting the right pathways in not only just at that location, but at Danbury High School as well, because it's not just a singular program that would be at the summit. It would be part of a complimentary program under Danbury High School that would include multiple pathways. And then one of the, one or two of those pathways would exist in the academy in that location. So the visit in Hartford was really more along the lines of the logistics of the project itself, the nuts and bolts, and whether or not the ideas of how they are going to position that building for reimbursement would be possible, you know, the ways that would need to be explored. And I think that there's legislation that actually has to be changed in order for that to happen. So there are some definite hurdles there to overcome before, you know, we start developing out, you know, the programming that goes in there. So basically, we need to own that building for them. And, you know, I think it would be a cleaner transaction. And so they're looking at details on how to do that. This is an unusual approach. Usually, they build from the ground up, they dig and build the entire project. And so this is a building, would be buying an existing structure and then refurbishing it and then getting approval for reimbursement. And that just hasn't been done. They spoke about, you know, 15 or 16 checkboxes on the sheet, and that doesn't exist on that sheet. And so how to get around that and how to navigate that and work with some area folks to get that done. So there's a few hurdles to happen, but certainly the project is exciting. I'm hoping and hopeful that it would go forward. And once that happens, again, we'll be working collaboratively to make sure that, you know, what we do put there in terms of programming fits some of the visions that we've been speaking about. You could be assured that it'd probably along the stem lines. You know, we've done our homework and research with the Northwest Regional Workforce Board, the types of programs that are in demand right now in this area, in this catchment, our architecture, construction, finance, health science, information technology, and high-tech manufacturing. So, you know, we'd be looking along pathways, along the lines of those pathways. But, and also, understanding all of the tenants who are over in the building, per se. We've heard some exciting tenants that are there now. There are some exciting tenants that are coming in. And so how do you utilize the resources in our backyard and that, or maybe just down the hall, to help build a program, help to support a program, and maybe even to help fund a program? And so there would be a lot of work involved in vetting sort of those potential ideas. And so we're starting to explore those now. But the first phase is getting that project approved and moving it forward before we can get to the really fun stuff.
So, for the board, you know, we've been chatting about what it would be. And we've kind of come along giving parents choices. That's been a focus of ours as a district where we could, where we can. And i.e., you have AIS, which is an inter, it's an inter-district, which means outside students as well. For inside programming, of course, we have the program at the high school, early college. The freshman school all participate in that. You've got culinary, you've got nurses by choice. You know, the board, when Westside opened, we made it two academies. Just respecting if there's an interest on a family to enter into it. So the idea has been, do we promulgate that? Do we permit more choice for parents? The view has been, in my view, yes, we'd like to do that while we not only solve a space problem, but, you know, not solve, but enhance the challenge that the state has put before all of us. Are you preparing youngsters for the workforce? Are they the proper areas? Will they be certified? And are they not just dead-end jobs? And this, what we're talking about is why we went to Nashville to see how they did it. And so I guess to the board, I just want you to know that when you, when this academy is coming together, it has to be with your collaboration of what we want to do there. Because you could simply say, let's just have another six through 12 and redistrict and put everybody up there and make it really simple. It won't be that simple, but, you know, we could do that. But, and I just, I was saying to Joe in an email that I think there needs to be some board conversations. I'm certainly looking at this as another supporting magnet school for parent choice. I'm looking at this as a alternative to a, a normal pathway up at the high school. So those are, you know, some things I think we should have at least some, there's some thinking from our board that's different. I think it needs to come out and not feel as though you haven't participated. I think that's the last thing needs to happen. We said to the town, we need space. They're gonna give us space. What we put in that space would be what we do. So I, I just, I'm just respectfully putting that out there. Because one of the things you would expect us to start to do is to start looking at, we have researching careers and start putting things together that will be operationalized into EdSpecs that you would have to ultimately approve, otherwise it doesn't get done. So I don't know, if Joe, if Britten has any comments, but this would be a good time if you want.
Kate had her hand up for a while.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Got a lot of people on here, so I just wanted to jump in real quick. And I don't know, you know, who the, the best person is to answer this question, Dr. Sal or, or Dr. Casemiro. So my question is this, I know that we're sort of in the, the planning stages to see if we can get this building, you know, put together for us and, and work out the logistics of how the state might reimburse for it. Is there concern about sort of some of the limitations that will be in that space as a result of making the decisions to do the build first or to, to do the planning for the build first as opposed to, you know, sort of having a more, not a fixed curriculum, because I know that's like a longer process, but like a more, you know, a, a better idea of what the, the areas of study are gonna be, so you can sort of build the space around that to some degree?
Wait one second, it's two tiered. One of them, Kate, and Joe, the, the numbers will require another pod. So the original thinking of two pods wouldn't have been sufficient. So physically, Kate, it'll be a larger structure. Now I'll let Kara talk about the other piece.
So, you know, the, the, we had some conversation around the, the six 12 piece being tricky, right? Because we're talking about, you know, keeping kids separate from high school kids. And, and then, so like the broader vision, and I'm, I'm gonna get to your question about the building first before you know, knowing what's going in there. The broader vision is that ninth graders, possibly eighth graders, but ninth graders would receive an exploratory college and career pathway course that exposes all kids to different pathways. They understand what those pathways can, can lead to, not just at entry level, but sort of a mid-level and then an end game, right? A bachelor's degree or a high tech certification in, in something that allows them access to another level of job. And so, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure that we do with a pathway program is that it has some teeth in it. So kids graduate like a CNA program with some other certification besides just a high school diploma. So you could enter the workforce, you've got skills, you have a leg up, you've got some contact hours done, you're certified. You can go right to the workforce or you can go off to college. You can go to school for nursing or for medical, you know, you want to do biology because you want to be a doctor someday. But in the meanwhile, you're working in the hospital, you know, so there's multiple tiered options. So these, we're looking for pathways that have some teeth in it that, that give kids choices when they graduate. So, and that exposure to those pathways and those choices and those industry recognized credentials happen through sort of a course, exploratory course overview in ninth grade. And then we'd want to see students have a, a knowledge base enough to choose a pathway for 10, 11, 12. And so, you know, this space has been designed for sort of a, to accommodate the middle school space crunch as well. So it's turning into a six 12 academy. So in order to, you know, you'd have to consider, you know, like sixth graders coming in, seventh graders, eighth graders might not necessarily choose the pathway that is located in that location, right? So that location could be prime for, let's just say it's architecture and design. Let's just pretend that that's what it is. They have to be able to make a choice. And maybe Danbury High School has the CNA program, they have the culinary program, they have a, they have a finance or a bi, health and bioscience program there. So you would want to see, I mean, in my vision, you would want to see students, you know, having an opportunity to have a choice of the pathways, a true choice. So it wouldn't be an automatic roll up, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Once you're there, you roll up to that location, but rather that there are options for you. So in terms of the build, we definitely see that location as an opportunity for STEM related pathways. And in all of the STEM related pathways that we saw when we went to Nashville, all of them include some sort, some type of design, projects, builds, space. You know, they need project rooms and space. And so that's one of the things I, I did mention to Tony, that no matter which pathway we go to, we will need project room space, we will need certain types of electrical things wired in so that we can plug machinery in of certain kinds. And so we have to have sort of a ambidextrous project spaces that we can kind of build with the future in mind. And so he, he, I felt comfortable that he understood that. Tony was a huge, very excited about this. I, you know, we actually enjoyed my conversations with him. I think he's just as excited about as I am in terms of thinking about the possibilities of design. So I do feel that we're gonna stay close enough on this to make sure that, that those project spaces and that those builds are, will, will meet the, the requirements of a, of a STEM aligned pathway academy.
Okay, thanks. And then it actually brings up another question then. So for the middle school piece of this school, you're talking about the ninth grade doing an exploratory program, which is similar to what they do at Abbott Tech. And I think that's, that's a really good exposure education wise and, and sort of helps kids really hone in on something that's gonna work for them. So I think that that's a, a very successful model to use. And I'm assuming there would be caps on these different areas so that, you know, the highest, you know, 40 kids or 50 kids from each, you know, section automatically get that as, if, if they want that as their first choice, they get first, first grab at it or something like that?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, we'd have to, to work that out. And they, and they, different schools handle it in different ways. And, you know, the, the, the goal is to have enough really great pathways that there's, there's something great for everyone and to really educate kids to make sure there's a good fit. And when, and when there's a demand, right, this is, this would be student driven. So if you, if we're experiencing a greater demand in certain pathways than others, you know, rather than capping, you know, similar to the way we do course enrollment, how do we, how do we find ways to expand it? And if there's pathways that are not meeting the needs of students and, and families, then, you know, how do we look to, to revive what we're doing?
Yeah. So for the middle-
So, so Kate, I'm just, just to add on to that, I think a point that came up, and it was a aha moment for me, is to try to create an academy that is not mutually exclusive to Danbury High School. So there would be opportunities at Danbury High School for youngsters to, to move in and transition if they change their mind on one of the pathways. So they would be working through those departments, which, which is really a great, which is, just creates more of an opportunity for kids to make a choice instead of narrowing. That's always been my worry, is to narrow them too, too quickly when they're just exploring. Well, then they can open up. So I think that's something I found refreshing as an idea that we, this is not a program that's a high school. I'm sorry, it's not a high school, it's a program. The kids will get a Danbury High School diploma, just as the board has permitted ACE and REACH. The kids want to participate in athletics, they can. But if they want to go to the culinary that we don't have, yes, you can do that. You know, things like that. And that's, it opens up venues. I'm sorry Kara to interrupt.
Oh, no, that's fine. And, and you know, we, there's so many details to work out. That's kind of far down the road in coming up with those decisions, but.
Do you have, do you have any thoughts on the, the middle school piece and how that might relate to?
Yeah, I think, I think the more that we can do in STEM, the better. And I think foundational STEM work for all kids is important. We have a STEM academy at Westside that's very popular. And, and we should, we should, we should take heed, right? And, and say, you know, what that's, that's, it's, it also feeds into multitude of some of the pathways that we're also talking about. So how do we build more computer science and, and, and continue to model? A lot of times what has happened, you know, at Westside, we've had some programs that have been over there that we start off as, you know, this is kind of a Westside only thing, only to a few years later adopt components of it into all of the middle schools. Because we've, you know, we've run the model, it looks good, it's engaging, kids are responding well to it. And so that tends to happen with new programs is that if, when they're successful, you should replicate and grow. And, and, you know, I, I see the, that, that would be an opportunity to kind of grow out some, some more STEM opportunities for kids. And foundational STEM courses that could serve a variety of pathways.
Excellent, thanks.
I have just a quick question. I know this is very preliminary, but is there, has there been any thought about admission, the admission process? You know, instead of the usual lottery system, you know, could it be like an application admissions? I'm sorry, was that discussed or?
A lot to talk about. Yeah. I understand. Yeah.
The board, I think that's a board level conversation. And, and I, I think it's a, a pretty hard conversation. We've permitted choice and not a-
Merit based?
Yeah, or skill. I should, doesn't mean the kids are unskilled. I don't mean it that way. It's, you know, if, if mom wants you to go there because of A, B, or C, and you don't have the skills, but you want to take a risk. What we've tried to do, just like the high school, getting the APs and other, give the youngster an opportunity. So it was open to all youngsters and it was the luck of the draw. I mean, that's been our, our, our role to get kids in there. We were more concerned about balance racially when we did that, you know, than, than it was that the kids wouldn't be successful. We knew, just giving them the opportunity, the right teachers, that almost 99.9 of our kids could do things. So that was the only thinking, Rachel.
Yeah, no, it's very exciting. I'm excited by this project, yeah.
We all want to teach there.
Amy, did you have a question?
No, okay.
Madam Chair, I'm, just because there was some conversation about continuing discussions. I know we're technically done for the year. I am available for sites and facilities at any time over the summer if we, if-
We will.
If we need to be.
Yeah.
Joe, whenever you want to call a meeting, Dr. Sal, whatever you need, I'm definitely available. It's a very exciting opportunity.
Or even just some updates. You want to shoot us by email, that's okay too.
Yeah, we'll get that out. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, no, sorry, I just, well, you, you know, I'm a huge fan of the academy model since we got the first presentation from Kara, you know, like over half a year ago. So I'm all in on this project. But I think we have a really unique opportunity to kind of build it from the ground up. Not literally, but, so it's gonna be easier, I think, for us to start something new like this than it would be to change something that's preexisting. So when we can, because I know we don't really have enough information to convene the sites committee right now, but I want to workshop it. I, I really think we have opportunity to do something special. So whenever we can get together, and Dr. Sal, I'll let you, and Kara, whenever you guys think-
Sure.
Best to, to get together.
Sure.
Let me know and so we can-
Just to respond to that very quickly, there's a lot of conversation happening about graduation requirements, project, portrait of the graduate. We're talking, you know, we're having those conversations about what the end game is for our students in Danbury. So all of this stuff fits in together. We've been having conversations with, with Dan Donovan and the curriculum administrators and such. We've been having those, you know, the state has moved in a certain direction. And we'd like to, you know, make sure that we're, we're, we're giving our kids the, the best that we can. And the timing of this project and the space need, it just happens to be coinciding with these conversations. So it is an opportunity to, to redo some things and to make, and to include this, this piece into it. So we're super excited about it and we have been having conversations with Dan Donovan and he's on board as well. You know, everything requires staffing and, and there'll be changes, you know, new buildings, everything. So we have to accommodate all of that and, and, you know, very efficiently use, maximize the staff that we have with the certifications that they have and arrange courses in certain ways to, to create opportunities. And so it's tricky, but this is, we're at the precipice, we're right at the cliff here of, of being able to do it. And so we have to weave it all together.
If anybody has, so I don't know if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm just looking.
We are, thank you Kara for the information. We'll move on to the board chairperson report. But before we do that, are there any committees that would like to have some type of report? Are there any committed report? I think we started down to the wire. The, and that, okay. My report is very quick. I want to thank all board members for their support. And just working together to make sure that we listen and do the right thing that we are supposed to do or we were elected to do. And support each other. And if we don't understand what we're doing and how we're, we're getting from A to B, then we have the conversation with one another to sort of discuss things. And it might not be the correct way that you would like to go, but is it the right thing that we should be doing for our district? I, 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 I'm amazed at working with each and every one of you. I know you all bring different talents and, and I respect each and every one of you. And I hope that this summer, that you will have a great summer and most of all, a safe summer. I, I especially would like to thank Kate, who's when, when I sort of get sort of in a little frizzy about, you know, the computer not doing right, this ain't doing right. She tells me how to click in and get where I need to be. I, I thank Kathy, who I totally, totally respect for her support over the years. And Gina, who has just been so kind to me. When I call her early on a Saturday morning, Gina, this is not working. And she's always so pleasant. And I just want to say, I really enjoy working with you. And I hope that we can continue to move the district forward as a good working together board. And, and that's my goal and my only goal. Amy, I have one task for you. I would like for you and sometime in August to contact Nick Claruso and see what we can do to set up, for him to either come and do Zoom or have a workshop. And I'm gonna put that back in your hands.
Okay.
Other than that, I would like to say to Dr. Sal that as a group, we have decided that we're going to be open this summer. Those that are around, and I know some people are going on vacation and doing whatever they would like to do with their family. But some of us are going to be around. We would like to be a part of any type of discussion that you're having about moving our district forward. What we need to do as a board, you just brought up the Career Academy. We don't want to get information on the back end. We want to be a board that's going to be supportive on the front end. And if we have to have a sites and facility committee meeting, let me know. So we can have a conversation with those that are here and have the meeting. We usually don't meet in July, August. And we know that September, when it comes, we're going, we're talking about September the 9th. The next thing we know, everyone will be preparing for Christmas and we sort of missed out on things. So we as a board want to be a part of the overall discussion. So hopefully, when we set up our committees, we, especially the sites and facility committee and whatever's going on with 2020, the Career Academy, what's going on with the opening school in August, we would like to be a part of that discussion, not only in. So I just want to leave that thought with you and hope that you will get the information to us. So if we have to sit down or do Zoom, we'll be available for that. And, and that's the end of my, not a report, just comments as board chair. If there are no other discussion, our hearts are in the right place, I hope. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for all your support and all your hard work that you have done to help make our district what it is. And Zoom was not easy, but you guys came in and everyone did what they needed to do to make it successful for our students. And I totally told you that. So thank you again. I need a motion if there's no other comments or anything, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Joe? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by-
Rachel.
Okay, I can't see no face, can't hear no voice.
Rachel.
Okay, second by- Okay, second by Rachel. Uh, motion is so carried. Good night, y'all.
Good night.
Summer, guys.